Good evening, everyone. How are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, that's fabulous. So you know that thing when you go somewhere and they tell you to make sure you silence your phone? It's that moment. It's that moment. We forgot two important things today. One was the tents for their names, so I just made this makeshift one. And the other one is a sign-in sheet. So Brittany, can you help me with this? Will you just take the paper and pass it around? And that, or yeah, either one of you can just pass it around for, and sign in, sign your name. So these guys are going to move forward. They're not going to sit back there like that the whole time. The tape is right here, so pick your spot, move forward. Everybody, yeah, you're all, yeah, you're not going to sit back there. You're going to sit at the table. So just tape your, tape your, tape your name in the front so everybody can see it. There you go. Testing. Does this work? Is it on? Huh? There's no order. It's just find, find a seat. And if we need more seats, we can add seats to the end. Come on in, have a seat. We're getting ready to get started. Renee? Will you, will you, I need your help on one thing. Okay. Good evening. I'm Tracy Wilson-Cleecamp. I'm the Vice President of Race Matters Friends. This is our 10th year as an organization. This is the format that we have always used for forums, which is it's a conversation, it's not a debate. Some of you may have seen the document that I sent to the candidates, and these are all Google folders, and if you want it, I'm happy to email it to you, but I put it on our Facebook page, our group page, so if you go there, you can find it. And each one of these is a folder, and it has a whole bunch of crap in it, right? So why did I do this? I did this because, first of all, if you're running for mayor, there are a whole lot of issues that you face. So Barbara's just not showing up at the meeting like, hey, I'm just here to vote. She actually has to spend a lot of time reading and getting acquainted with these issues. And then she has appointments and things like that that she has to go to, and then she travels for her job as well. So I wanted you to kind of get an idea of this is, this job, if you're the mayor, or a councilperson, or you're on the school board, you are always learning. You do not get to go into the office and say, I have this one idea, and I'm sticking to this one idea forever and ever and ever. It doesn't work like that, right? Things are always changing. So that was the point of doing that, right? So we have different folders, and also the other thing I did was I asked them to think about equity versus equality and justice, and I gave them an image because our organization is interested in equity. And I will tell you right off the bat that equity is not fair, right? If I am blind and I need to get around, I can't get by on the same things as a person who is seeing. So I need tools that help me do what I need to do. If I'm dyslexic, I may need additional tools and support so that I can manage. If I have ADHD, I might need to take medication to help me be productive. There's all kinds of ways that equity works. Some of them we do automatically. When we have kids and our kids have a problem, we de-center ourselves and we focus on our kids. Now, that's kind of a little bit of a conflict of interest because it's your kid, but we're asking in equity that we do that for our community because we're all different. We're all different. Haley's here. So, and I put some definitions in here. One is by the NEKCE Foundation, which hopefully these, these folks got a chance to look at. I also put a link to the Model Charter City because now when they talk about charter cities, it's not about efficiency anymore, it's about equity. So they've changed the language in talking about charter cities, that equity has to be a core component of the way that it's run. And then the city is in the process of doing an equity audit, I believe. It should be out next fall, but this is a link so you can get a little information about that. The guidelines are really simple. These are the same ones I use in the classroom. We recognize that all experiences are valid. We assume positive intent. We stay present in mind and body. We monitor, monitor patterns of participation. So in the classroom, you know, the person always raises their hand, but like, gotta share. We may disagree about ideas, but we don't attack people, and we practice courage. And one thing I want to say about practicing courage is, is you don't have to have the answer, right? You don't have to have the answer, but you can say, I don't know. What do you think about that, right? Because we have a lot of things going on where we don't have easy answers. They're hard, they're complex, and they're layered. So this is why we do a discussion, all right? I think that is all of my slides. So I, I sent all of them a little think sheet, right, about local issues. And probably the thing that Race Matters Friends started out the most with was focusing on policing and wanting it to be community policing. And it was about a philosophy about how you treat people. That's what we were interested in. It was a, it was adhering to a philosophy of how you treat people, just like doctors take the oath of Geneva, right, which is to do no harm, right? So we wanted that kind of philosophy mindset. So that was 10 years ago. Today, our police chief has started a new academy, and the framework for the academy and the department is based on something called the Curve. And you can look that up on your phone, but it is a philosophy about engagement and about policing, and that's a very different territory than we've had in the past relative to policing. So it's a, it's a culture shift type of framework. And I included some articles about that, and I also noted that we, as an organization, rely on the Police Executive Research Forum for understanding police issues in terms of best practice. So we're just not like getting upset about stuff because we have nothing better to do. We're actually like, hey, is that a good practice? Are police chases good practices? They say no, right? So that's where we come from. So most of the questions I'm going to ask you, I kind of culled together from, for the mayoral race, from your Reddit answers, right? So, because those are out there, and also I chose those because you all said them, like somebody didn't report on you and get it wrong. You said them yourself, with the exception of the folks running for council, you didn't, you didn't have that. And Jackie, you probably haven't had something like that either. And Lucio, since he was a write-in candidate, they didn't allow him to, to participate. So he, he responded about violence and all that, and policing. So how I'm going to divide this up is I'm going to first ask you some questions about yourself. We're going to be a little bit speedy delivery, not horrible, but basically, the tone of my question is, why, why are you running for office? What is your vision? And some of you may have, have like an aha moment when you decided that you wanted to become an elected official. And Barbara has already been quoted in the paper doing that, so I'm going to let her say, say it first to kind of set the framework. And then even if you're not running for mayor, the question is, you know, what, what is drawing you to this idea that you want to give up at least half your life to being, being a public servant? And try to, try to move it to, in like a minute, because there's a lot of you, and also Blair needs to leave at seven, and I was like, one big question I want you all to be able to answer.
Okay. Is this, is this on? Can you hear me in the back? Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Barbara Buffalo, Mayor of Columbia, Missouri, running for reelection. I think you alluded to it, is this a crazy idea to spend half of your life doing, or half of your time doing something? But it is, because I love it. So I am a civil servant at heart. I worked for the city for over a decade, trying to work on things like sustainability, which I know right now is a political lightning rod, but in my mind, it was about making our organization more efficient, thinking about the, the future generations. I have two little Buffalos. They're not as little anymore. They're, my daughter's not as tall as me. But thinking about those future generations because the built environment, the city is in charge of. The environment, the city, the organization that we have, we are in charge of. So the policies and programs and the infrastructure that we build today is going to be around for a very long time. It takes time to change policies. You alluded to our policing philosophy. When we think about, oh, that was one.
That's all right.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'll be around all night.
You starting the timer? Okay. Erica Dixon, I am currently running for a school board seat. A little bit about me, I resigned from CPS in August, served in many capacities within CPS. I started as an attendance secretary. I've served as an instructional aide, homeschool communicator, and most recently in an administrative capacity as Assistant Director of Student Services. Mother of three, one that's graduated from Battle High, one currently at Battle High, one yet to enter CPS. My aha moment was seeing our recent celebration in scores, which were great, but there were certain groups of students that did not see victory, and it took me back to when I was working within the system and we were talking specifically about our students that were accessing special, special education services and our black students, and being a mother of those students, really enraged that we weren't pausing and seeing what we could do to help uplift those students as well. And so moving into that space to really want to stand in the gap to see how we can help all of our students see success.
Hi, I'm Cezette Waters. I am the current Board President of Columbia Public Schools, and I'm running for another term because I still very much believe in the mission of educating all students. And to me, that includes public advocacy, advocacy in the legislature, drawing awareness to the programs and things that we have at Columbia Public Schools to serve students, and then mindfully engaging in the achievement data that our students are presenting to us, and continuing to ask administrators, our administration, how we're addressing those gaps that Erica talked about within some of our subgroups, the students on free reduced lunch, the students that, for whom English is a second language, our minority students, and our students with special services. I am a product of Columbia Public Schools, and I have two children that have graduated from Columbia Public Schools, so I have been in it to win it for a long time. But what really tipped the scale for me was wanting to advocate for public dollars to remain in public schools.
My name is Ron Graves. I'm running for Fourth Ward City Council. I'm a homegrown Columbia boy, born at Boone County Hospital, went to Russell Boulevard, West Junior Hickman, Mizzou, raised two sons in Columbia. My wife works downtown. I'm running for Fourth Ward Council because she can't work late anymore because it's too dangerous for her to be downtown at night. I, I've told my son, who's 18 years old, that he shouldn't be out after, after 10 o'clock at night downtown. So, you know, taking some experiences away from him growing up. I really think Columbia can get back to where we were in the early 2000s as the number one city, number two city in the country. And I think we really need to, to work on that. I'm excited to, to do this, and thank you.
Blair Murphy, currently running for mayor. And I've been here 54 of my 57 years in Columbia, so I've seen all kinds of things here, and I'm just passionate about the public safety of our community and looking forward to, to doing some good things and looking into a lot of things that can help in our community with all of us. I'm the father of two daughters that have grown up in Columbia, and I still think Columbia's a great city in a lot of ways. I just am now going to concentrate on the public safety part as most people will say, like in the community survey and stuff, that public safety is, is something that's needed. Some attention right now, and I'm, I'm here to do that. So thank you very much.
Hello? It'll work. Can you hear me okay? I can't hear it from here. Nick Foster, I'm running for reelection to represent the Fourth Ward on City Council. I retired in 2020, and in that, in that ensuing fall, learned that my predecessor was going to leave the seat, and so I talked with a number of friends. They expect, encouraged me to run, and so I did. Last three years have been quite an adventure, and I wish I could say that there was a single aha moment. I think there are aha, aha moments along the way. There are many things that City Council members also have to read and learn about, and it's been an extensive and a steep learning curve for me. But I want to take what I believe has been a successful three years for the past, in the past three years, for City Council to move some things along, some of which have been sort of sitting there for a while. And I think we've shown that we can get things happening, and I want to continue to do that. My background is as a nonprofit leader and also in church leadership. And so all my life, I've been a servant leader. That's the role I want to play going forward.
Good evening. My name is Ken Rice. I'm running for a school board. Little background about me, I'm a combat vet from the Gulf War. I was a nuclear, biological, and chemical NCO during that time. I also have been in restaurant management and leadership. I'm, was the owner of Wendy's and Tim Horton's Restaurant for 15 years. Currently, I'm the Chief Operating Officer of a local sandwich shop called Picklemans that, that's what brought me here to Columbia. And I'm very active in my church as a deacon, as the Finance Committee Chair. I also sat for 15 years with, on the Board of Directors for Spalding for Children, a foster and adoptive care charity in southeast Michigan. My aha moment, there's a couple of them. Well, teachers need help, and they want someone to help advocate for them. That is the biggest thing that I'm going to be helping for.
Hi. My name is Tanya Heath, and I am running for mayor. I am born and raised in Columbia, and my background is 30 years of advertising and public relations. I'm focused on public safety, infrastructure, and economic opportunity. And the reason that I feel as though I would be well-suited for this job is that in my advertising career, whether it was understanding the product and the consumer, or whether it was teaching students in the journalism school at the University of Missouri, advertising and public relations, and how to get a job, it always comes down to communication, it always comes down to brainstorming, and it always comes down to vision. And I just feel that in a lot of areas, we are stuck. I feel like we need to do a 360 as far as understanding each issue from each perspective. And with my journalism background, I like to go out and investigate and share the solution.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucio Bator, and I've been in Columbia since 2017. My academic background is in political science. My professional background is a little bit from public health to social services, and I'm currently a substitute teacher. The reason I'm running is because, I don't know if this microphone is working or not, but, oh, okay, okay, my bad. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, but the reason I'm running, oh, thank you. Excuse my sweat. I'm always warm. I apologize. But the reason that I'm running is because too often in, in politics, there is a lack of people-based policies that are brought to the square, and even less so for the most vulnerable people among us, being, you know, the children, the elderly, the disabled, the inmates, you know, and I know that might be a hot button for some people, but yes, the inmates. Just because you're in jail does not mean you should lose your humanity. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Oh, they can. Okay. So my name's Jackie Sample. I'm running for Ward Three. And the reason I'm running, it goes back to, I have generations of people who serve, have served their communities, my parents, my grandparents, even my great-grandparents. I got into ancestry a couple of years ago and found some really wonderful articles, even of my great-grandparents that my family didn't even know. So it's just kind of ingrained in me. And I've spoken about my grandfather at previous forums, but he truly is one of the most wisest and kindest persons I've ever known. And his lesson that he taught me was that if you feel the need to complain about something, then you better feel the need to try to fix it. And so I have lived my life whenever I felt the urge to complain that I don't think something is going as well as it should, that I'm going to jump in and I'm going to be willing to put in the work because if I'm, if it's important enough for me to complain it about, it's important enough for me to try to be part of a solution. So that's what has led me to public service. Ultimately, though, I will say that my children have been my motivating factor, and making sure that they have lived in an inclusive and equitable town is my motivation.
Thank you, everyone. You did very well. Since Murph has to leave about a quarter after seven, is that right?
Yes.
I, I want to move into public safety, policing, and community violence, but I'm, I'm going to task you a little bit with some of the questions I have before, which is, what does equity and inclusion mean to you personally and as a public servant leader? Because it does go with public safety and policing and community violence, right? So I asked some questions. What do you know about CPD's new police academy? What do you know about Jill Schlutie's philosophy of policing? What best practices have you studied related to homelessness, community violence, and access to mental, mental health and reproductive services? I got a typo. What are your concerns and what are your unanswered, what unanswered questions do you have? So I'm going to give you three to five minutes, so this is going to take up a big chunk of time. It's a big question. If you need to turn around and look at it, you can. But if it helps, I'm going to read the next question, and this is from the mayor's Reddit. So she answered a whole gob of questions, but this is one I think that, that fits into just thinking about the conversation. One of the few areas that the city has to control the police force is the union contract. How can you adjust the next contract to ensure better behavior by the police? Can adjustments to the police force increase the weight of clearance of violent and property crimes, for instance? More detectives, fewer beat cops? Question mark. If a clear code of conduct were in the contract and had real teeth on dismissal, including loss of pension, how much will we need to increase the pay rate? That's a big chunk question, and you may not have the answer for it, but you do, you do want to go back and ask yourself, what is it about policing that we are doing that's different and why it's important? And this also matters at the school district level because there's, there's violence issues in the schools, like bullying, right? So those are, those are needy things. So we have a philosophy on our police department side, and there's a philosophy on the school district side. And you can volunteer to go first, otherwise I'm going to pick Lucio because he was late.
Five minutes, Tracy?
Yeah, three to five. He's going to give, and you can stand here if you prefer, if you want to stand.
I have a lot of thoughts about the police union in general. I believe that they have locally and just police unions across the nation operate in a very unsavory way in which they exert their will over, over budget appropriations in a way that no other entity really does. And I believe that if that is one of the ways that the city can influence them, they should be willing to make more hard lines in terms of negotiating with the CPOA. It can't just be constantly giving them everything they want, giving them everything they want, giving them everything they want while public education is on a shoestring budget, social services are on a shoestring budget, affordable housing is on a shoestring budget. Everything else is actually underfunded while CP, while the police department, if you look at the budget appropriations for the 2025 adopted budget, I believe police is sitting around like 24%, somewhere around there. So after taking care of our public utilities, it goes police, then fire. So then we hear a lot about, from the CPOA, I believe he was on Columbia Buzz, and he said that we have this woke city council that wants to constantly throw police officers under the bus and all that nonsense. But you all live here. Do you see city council throwing the police officers under the bus? I don't. I see them giving them everything that they ask for. So at some point, city leadership is going to have to say, okay, you don't run this. This is not a police state. This is not a cop city. But ultimately, I see it as CPOA wants Columbia to be a cop city or home to another cop city, like what you're seeing spring up in places like Atlanta, where millions of dollars of city funding is being diverted to these new campuses for police. And to what end? I'll tell you to what end, because if people were to ever mobilize and rise up, who do you think is going to be there knocking heads? So to that end, I would say, yeah, I would say stop bending over backwards and negotiating against yourself when it comes to negotiating the CPOA contracts.
So do you have any thoughts about the police academy or the framework that Chief Schlutie is, is working with? I'm sorry.
Yeah. So my understanding is that Chief Schlutie, with, with regard to retention, I didn't see anything in her, in her statements about retention having to do with a lack of budget or a lack of funding. It was about the environment and the culture. And if this is an environmental and a cultural issue, we have to have cultural solutions and policy-based solutions that are going to enforce that type of culture. But if somebody doesn't have the wherewithal, the policy chops or the spine to do so, then they need to step aside.
Do you want to put the questions back up just so that I can make sure I answer them? And I am, I am messing with you guys a little bit. I'm, I'm trying to get you to think of, not at one thing at a time, but think about multiple things at once. So I would say Lucio came from an equity perspective, which is, he's challenging police authority, right? Their power, their power structure, right? So that is, that is equity, like you're challenging the existing structure. So that's why I asked, what is your idea of equity and inclusion when you're looking at these systems, right? What does that look like to you, right? Sometimes it means we have to move ourself out of that space and put somebody else in the middle whose concerns are more important because it doesn't, it's not something that affects us. It affects us, but it doesn't affect us directly. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah. So I would say that for sure, because we are wanting the best, we are wanting the best for Columbia, that means that for the police, we want the best training. We also want to make sure that we have the numbers that we need to cover the geographical miles of what's going on in our city, since I-70 and 63 also run through Columbia. And so if you look at the training for the police, if you look at the hours that they are working, if you look at their mental health, and you look at the exhaustion factor and the overtime, that is certainly something that plays in to any outcome. And so any group, if you take police, if you take firefighters, if you take a sports team, if you take anything like that, and you look at where the strengths and the weaknesses are, I would be focused on continuing to keep the strengths supported at a high level, but also look at the weaknesses and see what we can do to make sure that we are minimizing the weaknesses. So that's the first thing. But then on the second thing is that we also have the community. We have all of us. And as I have stated before, there is no five-year-old that says that they want to grow up and go to prison. And as a society, there are many things that we can do to help that five-year-old so that that is not the outcome. That's not the outcome I want for any of my family. That's not the outcome I want for any of my neighbors. And, and it is a tragedy. It is a tragedy. And it is a tragedy. It is a tragedy if the child comes from a high-income family. It is a tragedy if the child comes from a low-income family. We know through studies that people have had challenges as far as going into a path that does not serve them. And that is based on poverty. It is based on lack of resources. It is based on mental health. It is based on lack of a good role model. But it is also based on the person's personal choice because there have been very rich friends of mine that have ended up from Hickman in prison. There have been people who have been very poor, who have had tremendous odds, had a baby at 14, all sorts of stuff, and they have not gone to prison. And so we have got to look at the whole person. And as a society, we have got to care for one another. If we care enough to take someone else's child home from basketball practice, then we have to care enough to offer to take that parent to work when their car is in the repair shop and they have no way to get to work and that they might lose their job. So I look at it from an education standpoint. I look at it from a community standpoint. And I want to do the best on both ends to reduce crime and provide economic opportunity. And as mayor, I will be focusing on how to provide that economic opportunity. I will make sure that, just like I've done in the private sector where I am recommending and elevating people's businesses that other people have not heard of, I will be working to do that. Because when we improve our economic outreach and we take the time to introduce people to people that they would never normally meet, we can solve a lot of the problems just by doing the economic outreach that we need to do. The other thing I would do is that I would look at the mental health aspect, and I would look at the financial aspect. And I would encourage that people look at all ways that we can make a financial difference in our city. And so if that is growing small gardens, if that's growing a community garden, if that's carpooling, if that's checking on each other's kids when someone's home and someone's, you know, working a second shift, if that is two parents who, they might have jobs that are just challenging, and maybe the child is not getting enough attention and you see that, I would be encouraging that we do that. And so with the police, I believe that we want the best for them and that as we come out of the pandemic and the exhaustion and we are doing the trainings in person, that that will help. And not only trainings in person compared to computer trainings that all of us had to do during the pandemic, but from the standpoint of if a police officer enters a neighborhood, they are thinking about it from this point, and what's the neighborhood thinking of them? Thank you.
I want to just interject really quickly. So my question to you is, do you know about CDPD's new police academy? Do you know Chief Schludie's philosophy about policing? What best practices have you studied related to homelessness, community violence, and access to mental and reproductive services? What are your concerns? And what unanswered questions do you have? So we've discussed a little bit about what Lucio discussed about the police union, and you have a lot of ideas about how the community can hold people accountable, you know, through economic improvement, et cetera. So I'm sort of recounting this so that when it's your opportunity to speak, that you're looking to bridge or build on or even disagree with what has just been said. All right? So Ken, you're next.
Well, as you said, it intersects policing with schools. So to answer those questions that you asked, I have not taken the time and do not know the new... I'm aware of the new police academy. I don't know the chief's philosophy. I do not know... Forgive me for turning around. A little bit tough. So, and what best practices studied in homelessness, community violence, and access to... I have not take... I do not have a lot of information on that. When it comes to schools specifically, I was at a Hickman PTA meeting the other night. Mary Groupie is the principal there. And she had a concern because she can't open up part of the school because they don't have enough resource, BSSAs. And I don't know the exact term for it, but it's a support officer that helps out with the, you know, the resource officers there to be able to ensure that all the kids are safely put in. And one of the things that we got to is they used to allow principals to be able to hire those people. Now the district has brought it up to a district level. One of the first things I would say is we got to get it back because the schools know what's going on better than the district does. Each individual school, and one of my suggestions is, and I did some research on this, is how do we get more community involvement in each individual school, not just the district, but each individual schools? And one of the best school districts that have been successful out there is Atlanta. Atlanta, what they do is each individual school has an advisory committee, not just a PTA, but like a PTSA on steroids. And what it has is parents. It has teachers. It has staff. It has community members that don't have kids but pay taxes in there, and it has the administration of each of the schools. And that group is an advisory committee for that particular school. And then it bubbles up that each of the feeder schools has another group. So the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school has a feeder school. And one person from each of those groups go into that group, and that's a district advisory committee. And then each of those feeder districts has somebody from there that has a superintendent advisory committee. We need more input from the people who are on the ground to be able to solve the problems with this. We are, you know, we need to start thinking from, instead of a top-down approach, a bottom-up approach. We need to ask the parents that are in there. They know what's going on. We need to ask the principal, what's going on? We also need to take, we talked about, you said bullying. That's a big problem, and it's not an easily solvable problem because most bullies were probably bullied themselves. So what we have to do, one, we have to train our teachers. We have to train the kids. What bullying does, when it comes to cyberbullying, my suggestion would be we need to have a video and show them, and this is horrible, somebody who was cyberbullied that ended up committing suicide. We need to hit it right home because it's hard, but those kids need to understand what could happen because they don't get it. They think, oh, well, I'm just sitting there on Facebook. They don't know that that person is torn up inside, that something horrible could happen. We need to get that training in there. And then we need, okay, and then we need to quickly deal with that, take zero tolerance, and then work with that kid to be able to figure out why they're bullying and how to help them out. Thank you.
Great. I just want to take a little pause for just a minute, just a one-minute pause because this is what it's like when we go to city council meetings. We have to sit and let everybody talk and talk and talk. So just want to take a pause for a minute. Does anybody have a question that they want to write down? I have some pieces of paper that you can write your question down, or I can just pass these out if you want. Or I'll just leave them right here in case you want to use them. So yeah, we're just taking what I call a think space pause just for a minute. Just let our brains just kind of take that all in for a minute. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestions and the information about Atlanta. That's really interesting. It is really cool to look at how other school districts and other cities solve really difficult problems. And it's a nationwide problem. It's not like unique to us, you know? Just like recruiting police officers is a nationwide problem. There's a shift going on, right? So that's good to check out how other people do things. Yes, sir.
I was just going to say, one of my thoughts is I think we can solve a lot by involving more community in there, but if we can't, there's a lot of school districts out in this country. Some of them have solved some of these problems. We need to go out and see what people are doing successfully and bring it back in.
Right, right. Nick, are you ready? Did your brain get a little rest?
My brain can always bear a little bit more rest. I want to start by talking about a couple of experiences I've had recently. I did visit the academy. It's in the basement. It's actually a very nice space, but in a building that the city bought a while back that used to be a law office. It's right by City Hall. And it's really a nice space, and I was impressed by what I saw there. It happened to be that the day I was there, the class was about trauma and dealing with trauma. I stayed long enough to even be paired up with one of the recruits and to be a part of the exercise. I was grateful that that was part of what we do in our academy. And I believe that the academy is an excellent step forward for us for a number of reasons. But one of those reasons is that we have the opportunity, by training our own officers in that way, to train them in the way that Columbia policing is to be done. And that is reflected by Chief Schludie's approach. When I, not long after that, I did a ride-along with one of our officers. And I had done a ride-along with Chief Jones some time back, not long after I was elected. That was a good experience. This one was different because we were in a particular beat. With Chief Jones, I was just going all over the city. But this was good because it was in a single beat with a single officer. And I have to say that one of the things that his supervisor told him before he left, because he knows this is an area of interest for me, is that he might want to be on the lookout for opportunities to do some traffic enforcement. The reason that I have an interest in that is that I think it could be a telling marker for how well we're doing with staffing, for one thing. If our enforcement of traffic laws, which endanger a lot of us all over the city, if we're doing a better job with enforcing traffic, I think that it could be a good tell about how well we're doing with staffing because it means that we're able to shift the responsibility of officers more in that direction, which right now, they're not as able to do so much. But this was a nighttime ride-along, and we stopped three times. Each of those three times, I have to tell you that every time that officer got out and went to the car that he had pulled over, I was nervous. And he talked about having to always keep his head on a swivel. And while he was having that conversation, I was thinking about the class and trauma. Now, the class and trauma is about all of the things that police run into. This is true for firefighters. By the way, it's also true for those who dispatch officers into the field. While we were stopped those several times, the officer got a call from the dispatch about, just basically asking, are you okay? There was some sort of code or something. I don't know. And he would just basically respond in similar code, yeah, I'm good. Because people who dispatch know that they're sending officers out into situations where they may face some difficult circumstances, and they feel a certain responsibility. In a sense, they're there with them. So I think when we're talking about public safety, we need to be talking about policing. We need to be talking about those folks who are doing the dispatching from... And then we also need to think of fire, which, interestingly enough, we don't talk about as much. So I'm pleased about that. When I went to meet up with the officer, there was a stack of books on the assistant chief's desk, and I asked him about it, and it was by the gentleman who started The Curve. And he told me a little bit about it. I talked to Chief Schludie about it a little bit. And then I went and watched a video or two, went online and checked out the website. I think it's thecurve.org, and I would recommend it to you. But the purpose of police for them is to protect the vulnerable. And what, command staff reads these books, and they sit down and they talk about them together. And if you go into the academy, you'll see things that come from that book that are reminders to those who are being trained about what their purpose is. So I'm pleased about all of that. I think it's going to make policing better in our town. As to the union contract, I'm hesitant to talk about that so much because that really is something that council is not a part of. And, but I hear that concern, so it's something that I think is of interest. Unanswered questions, I think I have some about what will happen once we are fully staffed. And I am fully supportive of being fully staffed for some of the reasons that I've mentioned. So it'll be interesting to me to see what happens then. I hope we can move to a more robust type of community policing where people in the different precincts and the areas of town know the police officers who are in that area. They have relationships with them, and I think that will help in a number of ways. So that's one. I have other questions, but I'll have to stop there.
We'll come back to them. Go ahead, Plaza Two.
So I want to say, if you haven't done a police ride-along, I did one with the former chief, Jeff Jones. I think it was right before he became the chief. And he pulled someone over, and then as he walked to the car, he put his hand on his side by his gun, and my whole, I started shaking really bad. And so I was really nervous. And then other cops came. They could see that I was shaking in the car, and they were kind of, you know, ribbing me. But, you know, it made me think about like every encounter, how they have to be careful. And, you know, there's no way I could be a cop. I'm way too scared. I will not hold a gun. And, I mean, I just would not, that would be a disaster at that job. But I appreciated, you know, how composed he was. And he actually pulled over two young people. And he was also very amicable to them. He wasn't rough with them. In fact, one time he pulled my son over, and he was mouthing off, right? So, but he had a way of engaging with people that was respectful, even when they were disrespectful to him. And that's what I mostly remembered about the ride-along, was how much composure he had in engaging in that situation. Okay, are you ready?
I am also, I've done several ride-alongs with Columbia Police Department, and I'm getting ready to actually do one Friday night because you want to learn more, right? You go, I mean, you can't learn from anybody other than the best. And so doing the ride-alongs is extremely important for me as well. And, but the biggest thing with public safety for me is getting everything where it should be, fully staffed, most importantly. And, you know, I think that that's really important, that we do that. And one thing that I would like to comment on is like the community outreach program that used to be and that is no longer because the officers were needed to go other places. You know, so I would like to see that come back if we get to fully staffed, hopefully. Another thing and some information that Tracy was nice enough to share was like the late-night basketball at Douglas Park. Moonlight? Moonlight basketball? Midnight, midnight, sorry, midnight. I knew I was saying that wrong. Yeah. Midnight basketball. I was actually involved with that with Officer Mike Hayes. My business donated some time and needs to them. And I'd love to see that kind of thing come back because I think that helps put our people in a good place and teach them some good things. And just, I think it just helps a lot to be able to do that as well. You know, the thing I hear most from, well, Officer Kathy Dodd that some people may know is she developed a relationship with people in her area. And that was huge. She talks about that. Actually, her and I are going to go walk some areas in the real near future. And, you know, I think that that's real important to us. As far as the police academy goes, I have talked to several officers that are extremely encouraged and positive on how that's going. I think that's a great thing for our city. I have had a couple of conversations with Jill that have went very well. And she's, I think, doing a very good job currently. And so, but, you know, the one thing I'll say too about the visibility of cops can deter a lot of crime, in my opinion. Just the visibility of them will help deter from people, you know, just riding up and down a street. And I've had many people ask in my subdivision, could you, can you make something happen to where we have some police presence in our neighborhoods? And, you know, I mean, but again, you got to be fully staffed to be able to take care of all the wants and needs of our community. care of all the wants and needs of our community as far as that goes. But, you know, so Tracy, am I forgetting any major, major thing? You know, I have read some information about The Curve project too, and, or the, and that's, you know, that talks about how to teach officers to be like one-on-one or maybe two-on-one. It's not a group effort. It's not four or five, you know? So you gotta, again, and you gotta have some of those hard conversations that you were talking about. So that's, you know, that's another important thing. But, but again, you know, we got to work on getting everybody fully staffed, and that's the first struggle, I think, with all of us, too.
Can I ask a question about this fully staffed? We've been hearing it for years. It's a problem nationwide. People are afraid to be police officers because there, there's not enough respect. And some don't deserve it, a lot do. But how are we going to get it fully staffed and keep it fully staffed? Because that's our biggest problem.
Well, yes, that, that is a problem. You're right. I mean, when you look at the statistics of how many were hired and how many have left, and, but I don't have, you know, all of those answers at this moment. But it's extremely important to, to learn those and to figure out morale and reasons of stuff that, that are affecting that. So.
I want to jump in because of time, and I'm kind of piling up on you because we're going to get to Barb, and this question's going to push sustainability into the question. I'm just adding it, right? But I do want to say about the issue of guns and police is that we're a gun culture, right? There's a, there's a great book out, there's a great book out by Jonathan Metz, by Jonathan, by Jonathan Metzl, and there's also several books out on the Second Amendment. But Jonathan Metzl's book is about what have we become in terms of being a gun culture? And that everybody having a gun also makes it unsafe for police officers, right? There's a threat to them that didn't exist before because everybody couldn't have a gun, right? So, you know, it's, it's elevated the danger of the job because everybody can have a gun. So I just, I just want to say, yeah, we want to have a full staff policing, but we can't just talk about policing without also talking about guns and also talking about public policy, right? These things go, go together. So everybody in this country is scrambling for police officers and teachers and nurses and doctors and bus drivers and sanitation workers. If you look at the city's job openings, they have a lot of job openings. So there's a way in which we elevate, I think, the police in a way that is kind of somewhat a disservice to all the other areas that we need working for us as well. So I just want to put that as a, as a friendly reminder that there are real challenges that police face, and we have to think about that as well. But the other thing is what happens if we don't get fully staffed? So the question is, how do we, how do we manage in the moment with what we have? And that's what Chief Jill Schludie's doing right now.
Correct, correct.
That's what I think she's doing. Are you ready, Ron? I was about to call you, I was about to call you the wrong name again, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I answer to a lot of different names. So I'm going to stand up because I need to read this. I didn't get this email. I think this went out today? I did not?
No, these, these are, these are my questions, and so I, I.
Oh, okay.
I, I, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to give you a little rigor here. So I really appreciate that Nick told us about the police academy. That was really important. I think the public doesn't know that this shift has been made, and it should change the way we talk about policing. So that's why I included it. And that you understand her philosophy, because that philosophy also informs what they think about homelessness and violence and mental health access, maybe at some point reproductive, reproductive issues, you know? We'll see. But, but that philosophy plays a role in that. So I'm not necessarily asking that you know the answer to each one of those questions, but that you could maybe add to it based on what you know.
Well, I, the, the issue with the police academy, I think it was a unique opportunity for the city of Columbia to have its own academy. I think it's, it's very interesting, and I think it's interesting that around the same time, the county also opened their academy. So a couple of divergent ideas and philosophies, but that's good because then we can train our police officers to what we do in Columbia. I have not had the opportunity to talk to Chief Schludie, and I'm trying to, to get that opportunity. I do, I do work until four o'clock every night, and I will, will make that opportunity happen in the, in the next week or so. But, you know, I think she has done a great job after Chief Jones has left, and she's continued to, to really represent our, our police department and run our, and run our police department very well. I work at the VA hospital, and in my, in my job at the VA, we deal, I deal with our homeless program. It's a little bit different than policing, but, but we, we support our homeless program a lot. We have boots on the ground, social workers that go out and, and go to the camps. They go to, to the shelters, and they work with them one-on-one, groups at the shelters also. It's a little bit different than, than, than what I've seen, and we, I really have encouraged, am very encouraged by the results that we have had. We have 50 veterans right now in Columbia that are looking for a home, and there's not enough homes. So we have 50 veterans that, that we are trying to find a house for. That's just in Columbia. We have 43 counties that we deal with, and there's housing needs in every single one of those counties for veterans that are homeless. But that's just a small portion of the homeless that, that we have in Columbia. And it has really opened my eyes a little bit in the past six years that I've been, I've been at the VA, that, that this problem has happened. It's interesting to, to me that, that our numbers have gone up so much with our homeless program, doubled in the last year, I believe. At least, at least 60% more homeless. The one thing I, and Blair did, did discuss this a little bit about policing, and I'm going to go back to that now. I, I agree with Blair. I believe that we need to work as hard as we can to get enough police officers on our streets. Right now, the numbers that I understand, there's between 12 and 16 police officers patrolling Columbia, Missouri. That's, that's the same amount that patrolled, almost, about the same amount, 5% more that were patrolling in 2003, and our population has risen 60% since then. So, and to expand a little, I'm, I'm kind of, you just kind of stole my thunder, Blair, a little bit, but the community policing. In 2018, the community policing program was, was shut down because there weren't enough police officers. This was a very important program for five hotspots in Columbia that saw a reduction in crime after this program was started and continued. It was a fantastic program. That is a priority to get restarted, working with the, the community members in those areas that we see crime escalating, that, that if we can do that, get to, get to the kids, get to the young families that, that we can affect, affect that, I think that would be fantastic to do.
I want to push you a little bit, since you've talked about homelessness.
Yes, ma'am.
To look at this, because I think you might have something to add to this. And this kind of pulls us into sustainability. But I do want to say that about the 2018 targeted areas, I think it was more politics that it went away, not because they didn't have officers. And also, everybody has different perceptions about how much police they want to see in their neighborhood. For some people, seeing police in their neighborhood all the time is not comforting. Some people's neighborhoods are overpoliced, and some people's neighborhoods are underpoliced. So some people have grown up with a belief that seeing officers, this is a perception thing, seeing officers makes them feel more safe. Those are all valid. I'm just saying that in this town, in the absence of having data, we, we're going to be getting some data soon from Chief Schludie. We don't have it tonight, but we'll be able to have a more word-based conversation about what's actually happening with crime. So I want to read this out loud and give you a chance to, to respond to it, just because it deals with homelessness. Please describe the actions you would take as a strong mayor, including what are your plans to address the United States' expected current economic downturn and the real threat of destructive weather in the spring and summer to Columbia? Both will likely cause increases in our unhoused population and may lead to increased violence. Do you have a plan for assisting those vulnerable to homelessness? The next one is, families who might not be vulnerable to losing their housing could face financial hardships due to economic trends and climate change. For example, increased costs for building materials due to tariffs alongside frequent intense weather means home insurance policies have increased substantially. Further cuts to federal programs like Social Security, WIC, SNAP, Medicaid, et cetera, could impact us locally. And I think the mayor said most recently, we don't know what all is going to happen yet, but we're waiting on bend-in knee to see what's next. And so that's, and what do you see the city's role in supporting impacted families, and what plans should the city and CPS consider for addressing these challenges? So I've shifted just a little bit to get you thinking, you know, just kind of piling on, kind of away from policing more, but policing differently, right? And the issues that police face, is it their responsibility? If it's not their responsibility, whose responsibility is it? And what should we be looking at? So you work with homelessness, and I don't know how much climate is coming into play with serving people already.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot to, a lot to, to think about. You know, right now, we don't, right now, we really don't know what the climate is going to be. Right now, in the federal government, our climate is, I, I don't, I don't know what I'm doing each day as I go into work. We don't know what, what we have, you know? In the last two weeks, I've had to put five bullet points on what I did last week. My staff is worried that we may not be there next week. You know, funding for many projects, my son works for a grant program at University of Kansas, and they're concerned that the federal funding is going to stop, and their grants are going to close, and they're going to have to close their departments. I mean, that's, 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 that's what is going on right now in, in our world. So, I mean.
But that's real. What I, the question suggests that all of us are going to be vulnerable, right? In one way or another, right? It's not just those people, right? All of us are going to be, you're, you're feeling this vulnerability even in your position, right? So I think that's important to understand, that it's not just those people, the homeless people, or what, we're all, you know, the people that you serve are going to be impacted. Are you, you have something else?
I don't have.
Okay. Blair has to leave pretty soon, but I want to get through Suzette and Erica, and, and I want to ask a question, maybe before this question, Blair, maybe you can respond to it online, but, you know, it's, the question is, as a strong mayor, how would you respond to this thing that's looming in the air, right? What are your thoughts? You don't have to have the answers equated, but what are your thoughts? Because it's not just going to affect, it's not going to just affect, she's going to pass the mic to you, it's not going to just affect the city, it's also going to affect our schools, and all of our institutions will be affected. And the goal here is not to have the right answer, but maybe the, maybe what the issue is, what kind of questions should we be asking? Just, I'm prodding you.
And you're talking about on the homelessness stuff?
I'm just saying that with changes in the weather, right? And cuts and homelessness, we could see a lot more vulnerable people, right?
Sure.
And so what should, what, what is the city's responsibility in that situation? If you're a strong mayor, what are things that you would advocate for or bring people together for around that issue?
Well, I mean, talking about the homeless issue, homelessness issue, I mean, I, I'm for helping anyone and everyone that needs the help or wants the help, right? And, and that can accept it. As far as the climate stuff, the weather, I, I don't, I'm not, I, I don't really have an educated guess necessarily or answer on that. But, you know, as far as the homelessness stuff goes, Tracy, I mean, I'm, I'm for helping anyone possible. You know, I know a lot of people, I, I was, I was in a bad way as a child, you know, with a single mother and stuff, so I, I have a heart for that stuff. So I am, you know, I am in favor of, of helping the people that need the help, that want the help, that will accept the help.
I have a footnote in this document I'll share, and, and Tanya has talked about homelessness in terms of people being sick. And so I just wanted, I just went to the research because this goes back to sustainability, that if people don't have access to clean water and safe food, that's how they get sick. And so if the weather is in such a way that we're not able to protect people because we don't have housing, right? And we don't have shelters and things like that, this kind of disease stuff spreads, like we have a measles problem right now, right? So this is what I'm talking about, is that this, this, this weather, the change in the climate is, is also affecting people in different ways when they can't get access to, to services and food, clean food and water. So that is the purpose, right, of Opportunity Campus, I believe, is to protect people who can't get into housing like Ron was talking about, so that they don't inadvertently start spreading disease. So I hate to be apocalyptic, but if you haven't read Parable of the Sour by Octavia Butler, that's a, that's a good assignment. But anyway, I want to get to, to them, and somebody back there wants to come to the front and ask a question?
I can do it back here.
Okay.
I know Mr. Murphy has to leave, so I wanted, I have a question for him.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, Mr. Murphy, you talked about building relationships with the community, right? Very specifically in the Douglas Park area. So I just moved here from California. I graduated from Rockbridge High School. And in March, May of 2023, I went to the police department, and I wanted to sit down with, I guess, then Jeff Jones, who was the chief, just to talk about the loss that my family suffered. However, Ms. Jill was there, and in three hours, I sat there patiently, just hoping that somebody would come out of that office, just to, just listen to my tears that day. And she never come out of there. But she sent an officer, I don't even know his name, I wrote it down, but he said, if you want to talk to somebody, you go to the city council meeting. So I've been going every time I come here. And people are still being murdered. So how would you hold Mrs. Jill, or whatever her name, accountable to build those relationships?
Well, I, I think the relationships are huge, right? And, and I would, I would like to have strong heart-to-heart conversations with Jill about that, because I think.
I still want to.
Yeah.
Because I bother me.
Well, sure, and I'm sorry about that, and, and that would be my goal, is to be able to have transparency, transparency with anyone about any subject, because I think that's what our citizens deserve.
You tell Kathy Dodd she need to come back to the fore.
Well, Kathy Dodd and I have talked a lot, and, and.
Because I love her.
Well.
She's a good lady.
And she is an awesome lady, and she is passionate about that. So I, I will, I will work on the transparency part and, and make people more accountable.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Suzette?
So a lot of those questions seems pointed a little bit more towards city matters, but safety is definitely a priority of the, of the school district. And while violence is often a community issue, the line gets blurry because violence that happens outside of school sometimes enters into the school. It continues. It continues there, and issues that happen in the community bleed into the schools. So it is something that is part of our conversations as a board and as a district. And one thing we have recently done, probably everyone is aware, is we have added weapons detection systems at all of our high schools. And that is, it's a good thing, because we hope to prevent a weapon from getting into our schools, but it's also a sad thing, that we have to, that we have had to invest the money, and that kids have to walk through a detection system in order to attend their high school every day. But I don't own that problem, that is the world we live in, that is the culture that we have, that we have in this country. But I do think that prevention is a lot more effective than reaction. And so another thing that, actually, the, the conversations I've had with Jill Schludie, with Chief Schludie, have all been around a joint public safety announcement between, and Mayor Buffalo and I have talked about this also, between CPS, the city, and CPD, to ask people to store your firearms securely. That is a nonpartisan issue, that is not a judgment call about having a weapon, it is simply saying, if you own a firearm, it behooves you, and you, you are obligated to lock it up securely. Because by and large, if a child brings a weapon into a school, they almost always got it at home. So parents that own guns, lock them up, lock the ammo separately, because suicide is also the second leading cause of death among teenagers. And so access to guns is a problem from that standpoint, and from a standpoint of bringing those things to school. So that is, that is the way that, that, that I've been interacting with the police chief. We do have a relationship with CPD, and as far as we have SROs that are assigned to some of our high schools, and those, those relationships, from what we, from the reporting that we've gotten, have been positive. Those, they were implemented to be mentor, oh, SRO stands for Security Resource Officer. Sorry about the acronyms.
Yeah, School Resource Officer.
School Resource, oh, yeah. And they are, they are meant to be mentors and not, they're not supposed to be disciplining kids, and they, they won't do it. If they, if an administrator asks them to enact a consequence on a child, they say no, which is appropriate.
How does homelessness intersect with the, with the school? How is, how is that?
Oh, well, we have a lot of homeless students, and we are still required to provide them an education, which of course we do. We provide transportation for them, once we, once we know about them. And we, we either send a homeschool communicator to pick them up, or we, we put them on a bus route, or we have to provide private transportation for them so that they can get to school. Not all homeless students are truly without a home, some of them are living in a hotel, some of them are living in a car. And having worked with a classroom of students at West Middle School a couple of years ago, one of the students in the classroom, her whole family was living in a single hotel room, she had three brothers, her parents, and two dogs, living in this one hotel room. Her, her attendance rate was terrible, she was sick all the time, if she couldn't, if she missed the bus, no one could get her to school. She was eating only things that could be prepared in a microwave. So what I observed as a volunteer in that classroom was that she was, she, her mind was not on learning the different rivers that flow through Europe. Her mind was on, "I don't have any deodorant, and I don't have anything to eat tonight besides whatever we can heat up in the microwave that I can bring home from school." So I think that is an issue that requires a lot longer than five minutes to get into.
That's okay, we're going to work our, our way back around, but I wanted to make sure that Stuart Murphy had an opportunity to address that question before he left.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. So, I still, I still think, Erica, that climate does have an impact on our, people in our city and our kids who are housed in various kinds of ways on their academic availability, right, in the, in the classroom. And so I wonder if you might say something about academic availability and achievement, and, because I think you and I have similar concerns, a lot of families have concerns. I look at the data, I'm like, wow, like, how can this data still be like this, you know? And my kids are graduating from Columbia Public Schools. So for me, it's startling, right? And by the way, the, the, the data shows that kids in Columbia Public Schools, less than half are reading at, reading less, not performing at grade level before COVID. So it wasn't COVID, it was happening before COVID. So we tend to want to blame COVID for what was already happening before COVID, so I think that's important to remember.
Yeah. Also, too, to the police academy, I am not familiar with the police academy at all. And so I think that is an opportunity for the school district to have more conversation about that, because hopefully those will be our students that have the opportunity to enter the academy, so would love to have more conversation around that. We started a parent group out at Battle, so I did have the opportunity to engage with Chief Schludie during that, to talk about our lack of a solid alternative structure as the, the size of the city that we are for, you know, Douglas is meeting a need, but what, what about the kids that may be a tier above that? We are not really meeting their needs in the way that we need to, which I think would help with teacher retention. When you talk about the direct relation between education and the quality of life, and that the people that are engaging in community violence, the ages are younger and younger, I think that also is an opportunity to have more conversation with the city about how we can take a more collaborative approach in helping lower the numbers that we're seeing in our city. Trying to make sure I cover everything, I did not cover in my introduction that I also am the founder of the Men Missouri Black Dula Collective, the executive director of the Missouri Dula Community Council. When you talk about reproductive health, as a country, we have one of the highest maternal mortality rates of any industrialized country. So when you talk about the impact of trauma and the transfer in the utero, the trauma, adverse childhood experiences is starting from that point. So I think that's not a conversation that we're having enough, as it impacts our community and the way that, that birthing people are cared for and the lack of care. And then when you talk about homelessness, so last year, before I left the district, we had just under a thousand students that were listed as being in homeless status.
One thousand.
One thousand. So, and that is considered underreported by the state standard, so usually within school districts, you'll see about 10% of the student population. And so that's divided into four categories, and when you talk about students that are doubled up, that's still creating an unstable situation. So when you think about, like, if I was living with a family member, and me and that family member fall out, I have the potential to be back out on the streets at any time, because it's not my home. Our students that are staying in hotels and motels, our students that are unhoused, and so there are those different categories that are very alarming. We do provide transportation as a school district, but I think that we need a person that is designated to really assist those families in a more holistic way. So as a city, we have this narrow view of what homelessness looks like, but a lot of our students are in homeless status as well. One of the things that really hit home was when I was serving as a homeschool communicator, and I picked up a mother of students that we served that left an abusive situation and came to stay with one of her family members here, and they fell out, and she was out, and went and picked them up from a gas station, and I remember working all day to try to find them a place to stay and could not. I ended up getting them a hotel and dinner, and then taking her the next day to the bus station to return to another family member. And we're way too resource-rich in that city, in this city, for that to be happening. And so really looking at ways that we can be more impactful in that way. So I don't know if I covered everything, but...
I think you did, and I also, like I said, I, I will post the document on our Facebook page, but I did add some footnotes for homelessness, and what I liked is it broke down all the different ways and reasons that people could be homeless. I hear kind of crazy things like, people just need to work harder, you know, a lot of people are working very hard, and then that's not the reason that they are unsheltered. So we're going to go with you, and I don't think you've said anything, and then we'll take a little break, and I have a stack of questions that I would like to get through. So go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll cover a little bit about some of the CPD questions and, and Chief Schludie's philosophy, as it relates also to these. So the police academy came about really because we've continued to grow, and we have this, we've been really good with recruitment over the last few years, with getting people to apply, but we wanted to make sure to train them on our policing philosophy. You mentioned in your introduction, Tracy, about pursuits. And so within the city limits, we know that it is not safe to do active pursuits, because the risk of an urban environment of death and injury is way higher, whereas in the county, it's not as big of an issue, because there's not as much traffic. So for us, it was about thinking about, how do we make sure that we're training to our, our police, our community philosophies? And so the opportunity just arose, the University of Extension was looking to move where our police academy would go, and at the same time, Lincoln University was looking to partner. And so Columbia Police Department, Chief Schludie is friends with the chief down there and talks with the, the Lincoln University, and so she came to us about this opportunity, and we were like, okay, as the fourth largest city, considering that independents and other cities smaller than us have their own police academies, it made sense for us. And so for us, it was like an easy ask. This is an example where we, as council manager, we are not the ones directing these, we're basically like, what do you need to do, the job that you need to do, and ask us for the resources, and then we'll, we'll say yes. Related to Chief Schludie's philosophy, besides just the curve in, in community policing, the other thing that she's tried to do is to address the fact of recruitment and the civilianization of police forces. And this is this idea that this is a nationwide shortage of people who are applying to be in police departments, and there are some positions that don't have to be sworn officers. And so she's looked into, well, what jobs can we do that don't need to be a sworn officer, right? So the people, we can have retirees come back and do training, we can have some of the people doing the administrative work, and so trying to create more opportunities for this. And this is something that I learned at a U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting, when they talked about it, from PERF, which I cannot remember what the acronym stands for, but when they were talking about this, this program, about this is an opportunity to address that. And then I don't know what's next on the list of the things, but it's okay, you don't have to, but when you talk about climate change and the relationship between public safety and climate change, I'm part of a national community called Climate Mayors, and one of our most recent work groups was around the relationship between public safety and climate change. Because we know in areas where people are struggling to pay their air conditioning bills and pay their summertime bills, when the heat rises, then there's potential opportunities, both for people getting into trouble, but also having to find alternative means to get by. And so one of the things that we focused on is, like, how do you go out into neighborhoods? The city of Cleveland, the mayor of Cleveland, Justin Bibb, he did this great thing where he went out into communities and did neighborhood walks, talking to community members about, what are some of the things that you can do here, where we can try to do tree plantings, energy efficiency improvements? So I came back from that meeting and talked to the city manager, and that's part of where the Community Connectors Program conversation happened, about reaching out into our neighborhoods where we know we're having people request more assistance for utility assistance. What can we do to help put them together with the programs that are making the energy efficiency improvements? Like a property manager can get insulation cheaper through the city, what can we do to get them addressed for that? Because we know if we can lower their bills, they're more likely to stay in their homes, and then hopefully be able to continue to afford their housing. Because just getting a house is one thing, but being able to afford it for your utility bills is a big thing. And I'm kind of skipping ahead, but when you talk about federal programs, I'm worried, Tracy. Right now, when we look at, when we look about six years ago, when we looked about tariffs coming in, the cost of housing went up so much. The cost of steel coming in, the lumber coming in from Canada, increased the cost of housing so much. And we're in a housing crisis right now, and so when I think about the tariffs that most of our lumber comes from Canada, and if I think about the tariffs coming in, it worries me. So one of the things that I do as mayor is that I advocate at a state and a federal level for what those impacts are on us locally. So when we have conversations right now in the state level, they're talking about cutting for building codes and our ability to do our own local building codes, we have local builders who serve on our building codes commission that say the impacts of codes and what it has on their, their industry. And so I trust them, I trust them on what's going to work for them. I don't really want Jefferson City telling me what it is that my local builders need to do in order to build safe, affordable housing, especially during a housing crisis. All right, I see the countdown. Thank you.
Jerky, do you want to switch the topic?
Sure.
Okay, so I made a list, and hopefully we'll get through this. So as far as the CPD police academy, I know a little bit about it. I think it was a wonderful initiative, I'm glad to know that we are able to train our own. I also see the connection potentially between our students and the academy. Having it here for those students who are interested in becoming a law enforcement officer, sometime, I can speak as a parent of a college student, it's very comforting knowing that they're close by when they go to do real-world things. So I think it's a really wonderful opportunity for our youth in this city who are interested in pursuing that pathway. I'm not as familiar with Chief Schludie's philosophy, but I do agree on the community outreach policing that we did used to have, in having conversations with different people who are law enforcement officers and members of the community across the board. That has been a program that was very well received and appreciated, and so I would like to see us move more back in that direction. I'm going to jump to community violence, this is something that, in every discussion I have, the community violence, specifically gun violence, has been brought up. And a lot of the gun violence unfortunately is committed by our youth between 15 and 19. And I find that extremely concerning, and I'm going to echo the importance of locking up guns, if you're a gun owner. By the way, the library offers free gun locks, so they're at the front desk, you can just go up, they don't ask you a question, you can request it, and you can get it. Additionally, I learned in talking with law enforcement officers that a lot of guns are actually stored in glove boxes, because I think gun owners think, oh, if I put my gun in my glove box, my kid can't get to it. Well, then you have kids breaking into cars and stealing guns. So it's a real problem. So we really need to push the importance of safe storage of guns, not taking away guns, we're not saying you can't have a gun, you just need to be responsible with it. And I say that as, as a woman who grew up in very rural northwest Missouri, and when I went on dates with boys in pickup trucks, they had the gun rack, and when they hit the brakes, all the shells came underneath the seat. So, but this is very different. So we need to make sure that we are promoting safe gun ownership and storing those guns safely to keep them out of the hands of our children, because I really don't think they take it seriously. I don't know, I, I just, and I can speak from Ward Three, you know, Clark Lane, we just had a shooting death a couple of weeks ago. And I, I'm having, I'm, I have a difficult time processing that, and what the motivation is for these young people to use guns in that manner. And I, I think we need to have a lot more uncomfortable discussions about what we need to do as a community to address that effectively. Regarding access to mental health and reproductive services, I'm going to first start by saying it from a city perspective, I don't know we can necessarily address the next thing, but the pink tax, the fact that women have to pay so much money to have access to the things that they need every month is really sad. And when you're talking about homelessness, when you're talking about families of lower income, that's an extra expense, and it's expensive. And it, it's just multi-layered. And so that in itself, that is reproductive service. And not having those materials available to our students in the school, if they don't have it, or just to our people in our community, to our homeless population, I just did a whole unit with my students on homelessness and the role of occupational therapy, so I'm an occupational therapist. And we did a whole unit on how to work with homeless women to address their menstruation and their hygiene when they are homeless, how they can use old clothing to create pads, how they can keep themselves clean, where they can go, and just taking it to that level and realizing that that lack of access is demeaning, it's unhealthy, it causes illness, all kinds of other things. So that's a soapbox, we can talk about a different day. Mental health, again, being an occupational therapist in healthcare, my first job out of college was in mental health, and we do not have enough services. Plain and simple, there, there's not enough services here. So as a city, we have to be thinking about, why don't we have enough services? We obviously have a need, because I hear this at every forum and every conversation, we have a need, why don't we have those services? Is it a development thing? Is there a barrier to, for private entities to come in to build? Is there a barrier for private entities to come in to build a facility that would address these? Is it a state need? Is it, what is it? What is the barrier and how, as a city, can we work to make that more accessible? And on that same kind of tone, how are we, with the affordable housing crisis, which Barbara just mentioned, not everybody who works in mental health and healthcare is a physician making six figures a year. Right? We have a lot of people who work in healthcare who really need affordable housing. And so, a lot of people who work here now in healthcare, they live in Moberly. They live in Jeff City. They live in Ashland, although that's getting more expensive now. They live in Hallsville. They don't live in Columbia because they can't afford to live in Columbia. And so, then they end up leaving. Right? Because that can be kind of a commute. So, our affordable, that affects lots of things too. Okay, real quick, I just want to comment because of an open space on uncomfortable conversations. The question on, the contract question with the union, I think we need to be really careful how we choose our words. We need to have a collaborative relationship. I think we all have similar goals. We all want decreased community violence, we want community safety, we want this to be a safe place. And when we ask for a union contract that supports better behavior by an officer, that's a questionable phrase to me. Because I want everybody to think about, if you're at your job and somebody comes into you and say, "What can we put in your contract that will make you behave better?" So, I really want to make sure, I wanted to make that point because I think it's a valid point, but we need to choose our words carefully. And remember that we are building partnerships and collaboration as we're working towards the same goal, even if we have a different vision on how to get there.
Thank you. So, we have to vacate the premises by eight o'clock. So here's what I'm going to do. I gave each one of these persons up here a question. They're going to read it and they're going to answer it. And they got to try to do it in one minute, 30 seconds, no more. Give it your best shot. But then I'm going to take all the questions and I'm going to put them in a document and I'll put them on your Reddit or whatever. So that, do your best. I mean, you know, just give, I gave the mayor three cards, but they're kind of overlapping. They're kind of, oh, wait, wait, wait. Jackie didn't get one. Wait, let me have, let me have one because Jackie didn't get one.
Oh, no, she don't want that one.
Okay, we're going to start, we're going to start with, can we start with you, Jackie? Do you want to start?
I can.
And why don't you, you come up and read your question at the microphone right here so you can get a chance to stand up.
Tracy, is this our last thing that we're going to do?
This is your, I think, we just got to be out by eight, so we're still going. Ten till, I'm going to say, got to run. Right? So we got to get all our stuff out, so.
Okay, so the question is, "How do you plan to protect the most disadvantaged Colombians from the predatory forces of the developers?" Great question. I would like to know the definition of predatory, so I'm going to kind of assume that that means high prices. So, yeah, so I'm thinking. I think, from my point of view, the decision, when you're having those discussions with the developers, you have to be very clear on what is the definition of affordable housing. Because some developers think affordable housing is a $250,000 home. And that's not what it is. So I think that those, you have to ask those point-blank questions. Well, what's your definition of that? Because if your definition is $250,000, that's not affordable housing. So that would be my first question. And of course, because I'm an occupational therapist, my second point would be accessibility. Are you building housing that is accessible, that is in a walkable space, that takes into account environmental considerations such as energy efficiency, sidewalk development, whatever that is? So, multiple layers, hard to discuss in one minute, but I did my best.
Please, you. You can stand, yeah. You can stand or sit, but I thought you might want to stand.
Yo, can you hear me okay? All right. So, the question was, sorry. The question was, "Why do you think the city survey showed such dissatisfaction and low confidence in our city leadership feel the sentiment is a little less talk and a lot more action is needed?" Okay, so, I believe that the reason for that dissatisfaction is because they've done a dissatisfactory job. Because we have housing crises, we have economic crises, and there are no policy solutions brought forward. There's a lot of word salads, a lot of platitudes and a lot of virtue signaling, but not a lot of work being done on these issues. So, yeah, I think it was a fair assessment, but also with that community survey, I have problems with the collection method of it because there was a lot of oversampling of certain demographics. And 800 respondents is not really statistically significant in a city of this size. So I think there's a lot, there's way too much weight being put on that community survey. How much time do I have left?
Be fine.
Twenty seconds?
Twenty seconds.
Oh, okay. Just to circle back to something earlier, I was very deliberate and selective in my words with regard to the Police Officers Association and their contract. Said it because I meant it and because it needs to be said. And also, with regard to policing in general, I believe we need to have community control over policing, not community policing. Because community policing is just, frankly, just maintaining the status quo of colonialist and capitalist norms.
Okay. So, my question is, Tanya, you spoke extensively on all the effects of being short-staffed in the police department, but did not provide a solution to being short-staffed. Given that there's a national issue that does, given that there is a national issue, what does, what do I propose is a better solution for Columbia, given that pay scales have already been increased and steps have been taken to fix the culture? So, I have been to the Civic Academy in the fall, and we heard from Chief Schludie about what, you know, are the challenges as far as retaining the officers in Columbia. And it is the overtime, but she also mentioned a key factor that I think all of us can relate to, is that when they were fully staffed, they used to be able to do the fun things for policing. The fun things included going to schools and interacting with young children and telling them about, you know, what it's like to be a police officer. The fun things are to build those community relationships and many other examples. The other part is support for mental health for the police officers and physical therapy. I would have a physical therapist contracted with the city because I have known several police officers who, with the weight of the vest and everything like that, over time, their backs break down. And that's 40 pounds. And so, that's what I would work on with that. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and stand because I've been sitting all this time. So I have one that's directly, oh, I guess it has, if you think of it, School Board. Should a law against panhandling in Columbia city limits be passed? Well, that's a pretty controversial one for one minute. But, so, the quick answer would be, we'd have to do some investigation because panhandling is a problem. It's a real problem that needs to be solved. But the thing is, if someone couldn't panhandle, where do they get their money? How do they survive? Well, first of all, we need to take each person as an individual. And as a Christian, I believe that we need to come together as a community and try to figure out what the answers are to help those individuals so they don't have to panhandle on the roads. What can we do to get them to housing? We have some great organizations out there. One of them that I'm very familiar with is Love Columbia. How can we get together as a community and work with Love Columbia to help these people to get off the roads? So, probably over time, yes, we probably should have a law that has that. But before you have a law, you need to think, "What are you going to do with that person who deserves our love, our respect, and our kindness?" So that's my answer to that question.
I'm going to use the bathroom, I'm sorry. I've been drinking too much water, so I'm going to be right back. Sorry. Okay. The question I have is, "How do you plan to focus on issues that affect the most marginalized and put into place boundaries around the amount of time focused on the folks with much who historically get the most attention from public servants to the detriment of the have-nots?" Can you not hear it?
It went over my head.
Can we like break that down?
Can you hear it?
Yeah, but it still went over my head.
Okay.
Just read a little bit slower.
That mic's not working.
I'll repeat it. It's a long one. Is my mic working? No.
Is this microphone working?
Hello. You know, you really can't hear that out here as well as you can hear out there.
Yeah, slow down.
Okay, I'm going to slow down. It's a long question. "How do you plan to focus on issues that affect the most marginalized and put into place boundaries around the amount of time focused on the folks with much who historically get the most attention from public servants to the detriment of the have-nots?"
Throw that one out. I'm sorry. You're giving another one. That's a long one.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer that one. I think-
Every, remember, we said every, every, every question matters and everybody's, you know, what's-
It's too long.
He's going to, he's going to answer it.
Maybe my answer will help with understanding the question. I, I think you have to work at it. I think you have to make a determination that you're going to do the work to understand what the difference is, for instance, between equity and equality. I saw a movie over the weekend called Deaf President Now, which has subtitles, but many of the films had subtitles. But when I was watching that movie in particular, I thought about the importance of those subtitles, particularly in a movie about deaf people. But I also realized that people who are hearing often enjoy the use of subtitles as well. I think it's a question, a recognition that we are connected to one another. And we need to be aware of the needs that each one has and what we need to do to make it possible for everyone to have access to all of the things. One of the ways that I work on it is I have, I have this little placard in front of me for every council meeting. And at the top, there is a banner, there are three other pictures on it, but there's a banner that just says, "Equity." And the reason that it's there is so that my mind will be turned to that whenever we're dealing with any single issue. You have to work at it and you have to continue to make a commitment to working at it over time.
Okay, is this working now? My question is, "With so many police calls related to people in mental health crisis, how important is it to have mental health professionals available to police to resolve calls with people in crisis?" Yeah, I think this is a great opportunity to bring in some of our partners in the community that the city can, that the city can, partner, that contract with to have mental health professionals 24/7 available to the police department. It's, it's obviously a necessary issue in any policing situation. And our police officers are not professionals in mental health. I don't think that, personally, I don't believe that we should, we should have staff that are mental health, because I don't think it happens as often as it would, would take to have a, a mental health professional on staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But I believe that by contracting with our local community organizations, there's a lot of not-for-profits out there that are mental health-focused. Using them to do that would be a great resource for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. My question is, "Do the school district boundaries need to be redrawn? Should geographical boundaries be emphasized or student population mixture be considered with race and economic factors?" So, we actually did just approve an attendance area change in the last year. And we are hoping that that is going to hold us for a good, long while. We're not planning to build any new buildings. So, unless there is outsized growth at one particular building and some, an adjustment needs to be made, then we should be in a holding pattern. That, the decision that we made was informed by a consultant, but it was made after extensive community feedback. We had both a survey and then we had, I think, four in-person listening sessions as well as a listening session over Zoom. So, feedback could be given to, directly to the consultant and to the board. And we agonized street by street over, "Do we pull this cul-de-sac out?" And those two options, the geographic or proximity, so there's proximity and then there's demographic alignment, even distribution, you can't do both. So in order to evenly distribute the demographics of free and reduced lunch across the district would have required us to bus kids seven miles away from the school that's right across the street from them, which fiscally just does not make sense. And prohibits neighborhoods from, you know, the neighborhood kids from being able to go to their school. Kids should be able to walk to school, they should be able to go to school with their, with the kids in their neighborhood. Did that, was that the timer? Yeah. Oh, good grief. Okay, so, there you go.
And I will, I will repost all these questions. So, we got two minutes, so.
Okay.
We got something on people's answers on Facebook.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so my question is, "I keep hearing about community safety downtown, but not other areas of town. What are plans in other areas of town and the affected in them?" And so, I'll just quickly, because we don't have much time, use an example of something that I mentioned earlier. So I am a parent at Battle. We started a parent group at Battle to help Battle advocate for the things that they needed. One of the things that I was able to do was bring mayor to the table. I mentioned Chief Schludie earlier. One of our school board reps, the administration at Battle and administration at our current, what we consider to be our current alternative structure. To talk about current state, because there is a gap in communication with a lot of different sectors in our community and gaps in knowing, because we're not at the table having conversation about what's going on and how they intersect. And so, we were able to have rich discussion based on their current state, hear different perspectives, parents' perspective, administrative perspective, city perspective, to see how we can work collaboratively to help the students. And I think that's important when you talk about community violence. I mentioned and alluded to this earlier. You can see a direct connection between education and the quality of life, the sense of hopelessness that certain students are feeling, which I feel like is the root of why they engage in violent activity. And so, being able to have those conversations, also, I'll mention briefly that if you look at the disaggregated data of our school scores, you can see a clear connection between our different areas of the city and where the schools are in those areas of the city.
Thank you.
All right, so, I think that one's for Murphy because it says Murphy on it.
I'll give it to her.
Okay, okay, good. So the other question is, "Outside of more police and more arrests, how would you define or summarize public safety? What are you keeping safe? And what strategies or ideas would you propose to improve it?" And I think one of the things is that we've learned, people have alluded to the community survey. Part of it is all our own perception is reality. So whatever you're seeing or reading online or you're experiencing in your own life, that is your reality. And we all want to feel safe at home or when we're shopping or our kids are at school. One of the things, when I think about this, I think about the idea of, you know, a year and a half ago, we proposed the idea of the Office of Violence Prevention. And this is something that we saw other communities were doing, and it's where you were actually then working on a true, not just community policing, but also, like, when I first started, we were worried about domestic violence. So we had a dove unit within the police department. They're really focused on trying to address the issues of domestic violence. Then we saw an increase in youth violence. We started to think about, "How can we work it in the school system and neighborhoods?" Some other things that communities are doing are working about hospital-based intervention programs. Office of Violence Prevention will work within a hospital system to see, "When is there an incident happening and how can we affect retaliation and prevent it from happening?" Because prevention is actually where we think we're going to see the most success. It's not just in reaction. And Chief Schludie will tell you that. She doesn't want to just be reactionary, but that is their job. And so, what can we do as a community to be preventative? And so, that's where I think that question alludes to. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, we have to close up. I will say this, so that you all know, that Renee and I, we all always call billiards our office. So if you're looking for us, we tend to be there quite often, and we're probably headed there right now. If you have questions, you can visit our Facebook page, Race Matters Friends, just Google it. And we will put these things online so that you can look and follow up. And we thank everybody for coming and being patient because we do have a lot of candidates. And there's really no easy way to do it. So we did the best we can. And thank you, everyone who came tonight. We really, really appreciate it. Thank you very much. (applause)